I'd like to call the City Council Caucus Meeting to order for December 28, 2015. We have one public hearing tonight, if the clerk would read that.
Public hearing number one regarding incorporating 810 Arch Street into Arch Street.
And then for original consideration, item number one.
Item number one, under original consideration, in ordinance for 2015 budget reappropriation for plan reviews and inspections related to construction at Mohawk Harbor.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number two.
Item number two, a resolution authorizing reimbursement of expenses for the Rose Garden Restoration Committee.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number three.
Item number three, a resolution granting tax exempt status to out-of-the-box family worshiped tabernacle at 870 Albany Street for 2011 and 2013.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number four.
Item number four, an ordinance regarding property assessed clean energy finance introduced only with a resolution calling for a public hearing on January 11, 2016.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number five.
Item number five, a resolution appointing Richard Jaeger to the Board of Assessment Review.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the issuance of revocable permit number 601 to Gemma Market at 789 Albany Street.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the sale of 2321 Fairleigh Street.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing settlement of a tax surcharge for Shalom Realty Corp.
Discussed in Claims Committee without objection on consent, item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing a settlement of a claim by Adirondack Insurance Exchange, ASO Bonnie Doyne.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution recognizing the Muslim community in the city of Schenectady.
This will be taken out of order, Ms. Porterfield will present that, item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution honoring Council President Peggy King.
This will also be taken out of order, Ms. Porazo will present that, item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution to authorize accepting the bid and awarding the contract for golf course tree removal to Wicks Arborist Service.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. There's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus Meeting, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Ferrari, moot seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. I will now call the City Council Meeting to order for Monday, December 28, 2015, and ask you to rise for the invocation by the Reverend Sarah Barron of First United Methodist Church.
Will you join me in the spirit of prayer? Holy One, as we gather together at the end of the year, seeking to complete our business and make space for new ideas in the new year, we offer together our gratitude for Peggy King and the leadership that she has given to this council and to this city. We recognize the difficult decisions she has faced and the grace she has brought with her to all that she does. We ask for your continued wisdom and blessing, both on Peggy and on this council. May those who face the next sets of difficult decisions also find grace in meeting them. May all those who work for the good of this city be careful and patient in their words and their actions. May the work that is done here tonight be useful for the common good of all who live, work, and play within your beloved city. Amen.
I want Deputy City Clerk Chad Putman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation on your ground in the visual of liberty and justice.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Porazo?
Here.
Ms. Porterfield?
Here.
Mr. Ferrari?
Here.
Mr. Kozier is absent. Mr. Riggi?
Here.
Mr. Mutavaren?
Present.
Ms. King?
Present. We have one out-of-order presentation by the Schenectady Millennial Council to the Boys and Girls Clubs, so... Mr. Ferrari, if you would like to take the lead there?
Yeah, come right over here. I'll have you over here. Madam President, Mayor, and fellow City Council members, it is a great opportunity for me to present to you a few members of the Schenectady Millennial Council who have diligently worked hard to finding different modes of making the city a better place. And I'd like to turn it over to the Council Chair, Elizabeth McCauley, who will be presenting this honor.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Mayor McCarthy, City Council. I would like to present this check to the Boys and Girls Club of Schenectady for $1,245 that we raised with a pub crawl that we had all put together back in November. I'm going to hand the mic over to one of our co-Vice Chairs, Kelly Marr, who is going to talk a little bit about the success of the pub crawl and hopes of doing it again in the future.
It's Winchester now.
Oh, sorry, Winchester.
Kelly Winchester.
Got married.
Yes, a couple of months ago, a group of eight awesome young folks got together and we organized a pub crawl. It was a lot of work, but it was very well worth it. About 150 community members came out and supported local pubs and also the Boys and Girls Club, which I actually used to work for. It was a lot of fun doing it, and look for future events from us soon.
That's all for the evening.
Okay.
Would you...
Yes.
First, I want to thank you guys wholeheartedly. I think everyone knows how hard it is for nonprofits these days to go out and raise money. When someone comes unsolicited and says, "We want to raise money for you," it's a miracle, in a lot of ways, believe me, because we have to fight and scrape for everything. And for it to come from the millennials, you guys are going to be running the show sooner than you think. You're going to be in charge of everything. So it's good to see that you have your philanthropic eyes on already, and we look forward to seeing what you're going to do in the future. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have two out-of-order resolutions. The first is for support of the Muslim community, so I'll ask Ms. Porterfield to get up there. Gentlemen, do you can just come behind the rail?
Sitting behind Mary McLean.
Is anyone? Madam... okay, Madam President? You have the floor. Thank you. This is a resolution recognizing the Muslim community in the city of Schenectady. And what I'd like to say, first of all, that this resolution became as a result of an email that was sent to Councilwoman Lisa Porazo from Reverend Moonhawk Riverstone, and recognizing all that is going on in the world regarding the Muslim community, thought that would be disappropriate that we do this resolution to show solidarity with our Muslim population here in the city of Schenectady. Whereas, the regional Muslim population in this area is over 10,000, including immigrants from several nations and citizens born here in the United States. And whereas, those who practice the Muslim faith are integral members of our community, beginning with the children who attend Schenectady schools and the adults represented in all professions. And whereas, given the recent attacks in Paris, France, and San Bernardino, California, alleged to have been conducted by religious outliers in the name of Islam, there's been a measurable but unjustified increase in the fear of Muslims nationwide. And whereas, that fear has led to incidents of violence and hatred directed towards Muslims, with the Council on Islamic-American Relations stating that it has received more reports of acts of Islamic-phobic violence, threats, intimidation, and discrimination targeting American Muslims or those perceived to be Muslim in Islamic institutions since the Paris attacks than during any other limited period of time since the 9/11 terror attacks. And whereas, as Americans, we must always remember the terrible consequences that arise when a society singles out and blames an entire group of people based on their race, religion, culture, creed, sexual orientation, or gender identity for the actions of a small segment of that population, such as when the United States placed its own citizens in internment camps during World War II. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize the Muslim community as integral part of our diverse cultural fabric. And therefore, and be it further resolved, the city recognizes the positive contribution the Muslim community makes to the city and declare we stand united as a community against Islamophobia and all its manifestations. I'd like to move the resolution. Okay, seconded by Ms. Porazo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for all you do.
The Honorable Mayor, Madam Chair of the Board, Mrs. Ward, Member of the Council, Assalamualaikum, good evening. In behalf of the Islamic Society of Schenectady or the Islamic Center of Schenectady, I would like to thank every one of you for recognizing our presence here and for passing this resolution. In general, we are as American as it gets. Might be wearing different clothes, different look, but in the meantime, we are all American. We like the friends of this country, and we don't like the enemy of this country. And we appreciate your help in this matter, and thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the second out-of-order resolution will be presented by Ms. Porazo, and I'll invite Ms. Porterfield to come up and take my place.
It is my honor to be able to present this resolution to you, and I apologize for my voice, and hopefully I'll get through it without coughing. May I have the floor?
You have the floor.
Thank you. This is a resolution honoring Peggy King's service to the city and the community of Schenectady. Whereas Peggy King came to Schenectady in 1982 from her home in Toms River, New Jersey, to join the faculty of SCCC as Director of Counseling. And whereas, she ultimately retired as Associate Dean for Student Development. And whereas, since arriving in Schenectady, she has demonstrated her commitment to her new home by her service on numerous boards, including Electricity Arts Board, the Downtown Schenectady Improvement Corporation, Schenectady Local Development Corporation, the Schenectady Day Nursery, Girls, Inc., and the Albany Schenectady League of Arts, and the Human Services Planning Council. And whereas Peggy continues her community involvement as a board member for the Schenectady Symphony and the Sunnyview Foundation, as well as volunteer for Proctor's Theater, and numerous other organizations and causes. And whereas Peggy King was lured into public office by Don and Kay Ackerman in 1996, thank you, Don and Kay. And whereas she has since served for 16 years as a member of the City Council, on three separate terms as Council President. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and the City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize the leadership and tireless service of Peggy King for the people of the city of Schenectady. I'll move this resolution.
Is there a second? Mr. Mutavaren, all in favor?
Aye.
And before I hand the microphone over to Ms. King, we also have a plaque denoting her years of 16 years of exemplary service on the City Council. And there is a quote, "Do not stop thinking of life as an adventure. You have no security unless you can live bravely, excitingly, imaginatively, unless you can choose a challenge instead of competence." Honor Roosevelt.
Thank you. And I'm actually going to just say thank you right now, and also add that it's been an honor and a privilege to serve, but I will have some comments that I will make a little bit later on in the meeting. So, again, thank you.
While we've got you off the podium, we might as well give you a couple of other things. But Peggy, it's been an honor to serve with you, a pleasure, and just as a formal recognition on behalf of the city, I'm proud to present to you the key to the city. And it's inscribed, "The city of Schenectady recognizes and thanks you for your 14 years of commitment, leadership, and dedication in the Schenectady City Council. You are a true asset to the city, and we wish you well in your retirement." And I'm proud to present that to you tonight.
And I'll just say thank you, Mayor. I have thoroughly enjoyed working with you over the years, both as when you were a councilperson and now as the mayor, so I think you've done a tremendous job. All right, we have one public hearing tonight about incorporating 810 Arch Street into Arch Street. I have no one signed up to speak, so I'm going to declare that public hearing closed. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes for December 14, 2015. Mr. Riggi, seconded by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Communications and petitions.
Under communications, presented to the City Council for Monday, December 28, 2015, under official, from the mayor, a list of appointments dated December 28, 2015. Under general, there are none. Under petitions, there are none.
Thank you. Do we have any committee reports? Nope, okay. We'll move on to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have three people signed up to speak. The first is P.D. Vorus.
I'm P.D. Vorus, and I live in the city. I want to speak about the last resolution, the awarding of a contract to Wicks for removal of trees in the city. Wicks is in Spring Valley, New York. It's over 200 miles away. I don't see how they possibly can be awarded this bid and come here and bring all their equipment from that distance. And you presented the numbers, but it just sounds to me like there's some kind of contrivance happening here. I do question it. And I also question why this is in the capital budget, removing of trees. I don't get it. It doesn't sound like a capital event to me. Maybe they're going to turn the trees into picnic tables. That might have something to do with it, but I just don't get that. And plus, the contract on this was hole by hole at the golf course. And each presentation didn't seem to make sense. One hole where the number of trees being removed was the same. There was a variance of $20,000 to $30,000 either way on these bids, so I do question that. Congratulations, Ms. King, been around for a very long time. I think there's hardly anybody that doesn't know you. I don't know how long it'll take to get you off the road of review of Channel 18 with all the other councilwomen, but that'll be interesting to watch. And the last time I recall that a key to the city was given to anybody was to Mrs. Brucker, and she immediately bought a house out of town to make sure that they couldn't bring you back in again for service as a soldier at all times. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Mary McLean?
I am going to talk about item number two, the Rose Garden, and compare it to item number 12, tree removal. In the case of item number 12, tonight's City Council is going to vote to spend $133,865,000 to remove trees from the golf course. This amount was reached after input from the Engineering Department and others. After the way the Engineering Department ran amok in the Goose Hill neighborhood this year, I certainly do not have confidence in anything they do. This sum is a lot of money. By contrast, in item number two, the Rose Garden Committee is going to receive $850 from events held in the Rose Garden. It isn't even coming from taxpayer dollars. That is how much value council puts on all the grunt work the committee does to maintain an award-winning space. At the last City Council Meeting, nine civic-minded citizens stood in this chamber and were recognized for the work they do in the greenhouse. The work involved removal of scrap, painting structures at the site, repairing glass in the fence, and so on. All manual work. The work in the Rose Garden is just as hard. The sum the council has allotted for tonight's vote is a petence. The group deserves more. The city receives an abundance of free labor from the conscientious citizens of this city, and groups such as the Rose Garden Committee should receive the money it needs to maintain the space. Start putting some of our tax dollars toward beautification. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Wicks?
I start off by thanking the members here for recognizing the youth program, and also for recognizing the Muslim community here, the existence of citizenship, and finally the leadership of Margaret King here in the council. I've been talking here over the year over police conduct here. I also realize it's easier for myself as a nonofficial to be critical and oversight rather than the elected members who really have to work with, get along, to go along. So what I've done is I've put together a report of some 2015 abuses by the Schenectady Police Department that I'm submitting to the United States Justice Department, Civil Rights Division. I don't know what they're going to do with it. I'm just reporting it. I've reported this before. Number one is the arrest of Shaq Parker, a 22-year-old black, and incarceration for assaulting a police officer, which was a lie. He was actually assaulted by three policemen, no pepper sprayed, and tasered, with the police chief overseeing it. The other one, another one I have is the police comment. Schenectady settled for half a million dollars for a suit against a city for a policeman that pushed a person's face into the ground. And their justification was that they were, I think the police quoted, "Hundreds of students throwed bottles as vehicles and police as they tried to break quite the crowd." As far as I know, there's no bottles thrown. The police department's there, so this is obviously a lie to justify the excesses there, which cost the city $500,000. Just, it might be a small thing, but as that reporter is riding with the police over in the Central Park, and I think it was Officer Jeff McCoutron, and he starts harassing a vehicle, an argument of a parked vehicle for no reason. And he joked about harassing him, and this is not the way a police department ought to conduct his business. And the other one I'm adding to the list here is a professor, actually a policeman, High, who basically frivolously interrupted traffic. You know, drivers driving more cautiously than he should. This Professor High tries to do a traffic check in a left-turning lane at peak time, which obstructs all traffic. Then he writes a frivolous ticket. The driver asks for the frivolous ticket to be vacated. The driver goes to the home of the driver when he's not there, in front of the wife with where he is, and basically issues another frivolous ticket.
Mr. Wicks, please summarize.
So anyway, I think there ought to be some way for the citizens to directly report rather than myself coming to the City Council.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed, and we'll entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda. Mr. Mutavaren, seconded by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll then move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. Anthony Carata?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Chair of Council, Madam President. I know you all want to end this year on a positive note, and in a few days begin the new year on a better note. But it to be the bearer of bad news. This year did not end on a good note. You had less than two weeks apart, not one, not two, not three, but four incidences. Number one, incident number one. The week of 21st, that Monday until Tuesday the 22nd, someone got stabbed right across the street from a hawk ambulance. Incident number two, the week of Christmas, the sports bar, El Dorado, in Mount Pleasant neighborhood, right next door to Mount Pleasant Bakery. I guess some people got drunk, celebrating Christmasy or whatever, got in a fight, went out on the street, someone got shot in the leg. Incident three and four, that Saturday, less than an hour apart, two stabbings occurred, right down the corner of Albany Hewlett. Then an hour later, a stabbing occurred at Southgate Apartments. Now, much as I give the police and detectives credit, as in a law-abiding citizen, I respect them for the investigations into the matter and making arrests. And I congratulate and give credit to Mr. Riggi, the only person on the council. I don't know why the rest of the council or you, Mayor, does this, or form the public about the investigation of the police. the investigation the police do. Now, also, I know Friday, Mayor's going to do his State of the City dress for 2016. He's going to say about how wonderful business is coming in, how wonderful downtown is, blah, 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 blah. Then he's going to get to talking about the police, yes, the calls they have to go to. Then he's going to talk about how crime's down. Now, about that, there are some aspects of crime down. As in the news or in the paper, there hasn't been much reporting of stabbings, people getting robbed, murders, shootings, what have you, except for the four that occurred two weeks apart. Now, those statistics look good on paper. Much as that debate you had with Roger Hall and Tom Warner cable, where the reporter said that our own government agency, Department of Justice, supposedly had statistics saying that crime was down in Schenectady for five years. That all looks good on paper, but when you start saying about how crime is down statistically, fancy, fancy numbers. Mayor, I suggest, as a resident of Schenectady, who knows what's real going on, that you or someone in the administration, check, see if those are accurate, before you start screaming about how statistics are saying the crime is down in Schenectady, when we all know, we, the people, know that crime is not down.
Thank you. Okay. Jaya Sundaresh.
Members of the council, I am going to give you an update about Miracle on Craig Street as the Miracle on Craig Street interim secretary. I've got great news for the council. We raised over $8,000 during the telethon that was held on December 1st on Giving Tuesday in Proctor's Theater. We had almost 100 people donate. People came in, they walked in, they donated money, or they called in on our phone lines and they donated money, and it was so empowering to be part of it. We had almost, we had over 50 supporters who spoke in support of Miracle on Craig Street and/or performed at the event. The mayor was there, thank you. John was there, the other John was there, Sheila, Ebony, Marva. We had over 20 volunteers who helped put on the event. Oh, of course, Councilwoman Marion Porterfield. She hosted an hour, and it was wonderful. And Chad, who isn't here, Chad Putnam. And to date, we have raised over $30,000, and we'd like to thank some of our bigger donators, including JA JFR Construction, Sandra Porterfield, in memory of Councilwoman Marion's late brother, Exclusive Barbershop, and John Mutiveren, also MVP Healthcare. And we are working on continuing our fundraising efforts and working with partners in the community for programming and shared resources. And we look forward to another meeting with the mayor very soon to get updated on where we're at in the process of municipal foreclosure. So things are looking up, and we're very happy for all the support you've given us, and the future is bright for a new community center where the Carver building used to be. So thank you so much.
Thank you, and congratulations. P.D. Vorus.
I'm disappointed that tonight you didn't have an election of officers for the coming year. I'm anxious to know who is going to preside, but I also think that we should preclude the possibility of anyone coming on to the council for the first time and being put in that position. I think somebody that's got some experience is really the person that's qualified for it, and so I'm missing that. And it just happens to be an issue that I've dealt with before. Another thing I wanted to address is something else I've mentioned before. I think each important committee that meets, and they're all important, ought to have representation from the council on them. And I was speaking about planning, zoning, the police task force. Also, it's very important that we have representation from the council on the Technology and Energy Commission. Now, Mr. Delasala was the last one that I know of that was on it, but there was a time when each one of these committees had representation from council so that you knew what was going on, and people that come before you and talk about issues, you would be informed, if somebody on the council could advise you as to what's happening. And a lot of things are happening. It's strange to me. I have a lot of questions, but they aren't always welcome. And I didn't particularly like to talk tonight about phobias against people, because I don't think they're real, but Schenectady is a community that exploits people's phobias. I know that. I live in the inner city. I don't live in the urban areas, and they exploit phobias. And so I don't like particularly having that mentioned, or I really take it as a suggestion. I don't have any phobia against them, but then again, I've taken courses on religion, and that helps to cut a lot of stuff out of the way. So, but I hope everything goes well for that community and that they do contribute to Schenectady. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
As long as council members use this venue for puffery, I am going to tell you, it isn't so. Schenectady's city government does not do good work. Point number one. At the last council meeting, a young mother stood weeping at this podium. She also showed pictures of roaches in her apartment. What did the council president do? She said, "I gave you three minutes, and now your time is up." Point number two. The county has a double-A rating because City Council gave them an eight-year contract that limits the fund the city receives from the county. Therefore, the county has the money, and the city has yet to pay the principal on the Foster Avenue facility. Point number three. When I walked out of the council meeting on December 11th, the Christmas tree lights were out. Why? Fifteen days before Christmas, people in the building, a meeting going on in Room 10, and the Christmas tree lights are out. Was the city saving electricity? But council can't find money on electric plug-ins. Point number four. This summer, council voted to Blacktuck Ice Street. Seven homes on the street have shoulders. The shoulders are cracked. The street was done, the shoulders were not. Consequently, half the road is old and half is new. That is what I see every day when I open my door to pick up the newspaper. No money for street, but plenty for union bonuses. Point number five. Council voted to renovate the all-purpose room at Steyman's Park. The city's engineering department allowed the contractor to install an exposed galvanized heating tunnel across the new ceiling. No one would do that in his own family room, but the city did it in my neighborhood. I want that monstrosity out of there. Point number six. The New Ellis Hospital sign. The city gave the hospital permission to remove a well-manicured plot of ground and replace it with a 100-foot metal guardrail and a line of parked cars. That is not what was submitted for approval. Go back and do it right. Point number seven. The closing of the CVS in Sheridan Plaza. The community learned of the closing 10 days after the election because personnel were ordered to keep the closing quiet.
Please summarize.
Folks, you're bluffing your way through life. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Hall.
Well, I'm Joy Hall of Schenectady. We've got a lot to do. Clean up Schenectady, keep the gangs off, keep the speeders from speeding and parking on the sidewalks. That's another matter. They shouldn't be parking on sidewalks as the road. And catch these drivers that are making a left-hand turn on State Street and not terrorists. Not supposed to make a left-hand turn there. There's a lot of places they are doing this. It's got to stop before somebody gets hurt, and something's got to be done. We've got to keep these gangs off the streets and make it safe for everybody, for the seniors, the handicapped, the hospitals too. Keep everything safe, because you never know from one day to the next what's going to happen. I'm just hoping next year is a better year for everybody.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed. And before we move into miscellaneous business of the council, I just wanted to make an introduction. We appointed Dick Jaeger tonight to the Board of Assessment Review. Dick is here. Dick, if you would just stand up and just wave. Thank you for coming. Okay. All right, privilege of the floor, miscellaneous business of the council. Okay, Mrs. Prazzo.
Thank you. I hope everyone had a great holiday season and certainly wish everyone Happy New Year. But special congratulations to Perica Bakery, because today came out in the news that they are being named New York's Finest Local Bakery by TripAdvisor's FlipKey site, and only one bakery per state was named. So it's really quite an honor. So I'm sure you'll be seeing some additional press going forward, but congratulations to our little hometown bakery that pumps out that bread that people want sent to them, you know, across the country. So that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Riggi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to take this opportunity, wish everyone a blessed and happy new year, and to thank you for your service, Ms. King. You've done a great job. You've treated everyone fairly and very professional, and I'm going to miss you. You know, I have to tell you that. So thank you for your service, and I hope you'll stay involved, and I'm sure you will, and I'm sure you'll enjoy not having to show up every week, too. Enjoy.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. I also want to say, well, Happy New Year to everyone. I hope you're enjoying your holiday season and just really be safe. We're having our first snow tonight out here. I'm kind of looking forward to it. I'd also like to thank you, President King, for your leadership of this council. As a member of this council, certainly I also feel that you'd be extremely fair and objective in your leadership, and I have learned a lot from you, and I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. And, you know, some Monday night, if you're not busy, come and just join us.
Absolutely.
So thank you again, and I wish you well.
Thank you. Mr. Mutiveren.
Thank you. To join my colleague, Ms. King, I would like to congratulate you and thank you for all the things that you've done. It's great working alongside you. You're awesome, and you've shared a lot of your experience, 16 years on the council. We have learned a lot, personally, I've learned a lot. And I will surely miss you, but please remember to check in with us once in a while and enjoy your retirement. It's well deserved. To everyone out there, I would like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. As it says, we're getting our first snow tomorrow. Please be safe out there. First snow, it's not always safe, so be careful out there. Have a safe holiday, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. It's been brought up, the forecast has receiving the first snowstorm this evening. Forecast has some snow coming in at 9:00, maybe 10:00. There is the potential for freezing rain into the morning, and so I would just urge everyone to exercise caution. We have crews ready to go, and we'll handle the snow removal, but freezing rain is always very difficult and can be dangerous, so that either early this morning or tomorrow morning going to work, just would caution people to, if, in fact, we do get the freezing rain, approach things a little bit slower and allow a little bit more lead time and everyone to be safe. And Peggy, it has been a pleasure working with you. You've done a great job as council president and as council member, and do wish you the best in whatever future endeavors you may choose to pursue. Thank you on behalf of the city.
Thank you. And I just want to say, as I said earlier, it's been an honor and a privilege to have served on the City Council for 16 of the last 20 years. It wasn't 16 years consecutively, little break in there, and to have been president for the past two-plus years. It's been an exciting time as well with all of the redevelopment of downtown, the upcoming Mohawk Harbor and Casino, the mayor's new initiatives like the Homes Program and the building demolition, which have finally allowed us to get into the neighborhoods to make improvements. I like to feel that I have made contributions to all of those efforts by being a team player and by helping the council to work cohesively and in concert with the mayor, the county, Metroplex, the chamber, and our state-elected officials. While I'm happy to be going into retirement, there are certainly things I will miss, especially working with our wonderful city staff. The mayors have assembled a great team over the years, and it's been a pleasure to work in partnership with them to move our city forward. So thank you to all of you who have supported me over the years. I leave feeling proud of all our collective accomplishments. I wish the new council all the best as they deal with the many complex issues that will come before them, and I wish everyone a very happy 2016. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Porterfield, seconded by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. [applause]